Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first on the agenda of the day is the proposed changes to the solid waste management ordinance. So, Mr. Hill, are you doing this? Or is... Mr. Canaan, okay, very good, thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair, good morning Commissioners. Tony Hill, Director of Environmental Resources. Just here to propose changes to the current solid waste management ordinance. And the reason for these changes are twofold. One is to allow more flexibility in our enforcement options. In, oh, sorry, Clar, next slide, thank you. Allow more flexibility in enforcement options in Section 3510 of the ordinance. And then just minor language changes to the solid waste fee schedule. So there's no changes to the fees, just some minor modifications to the language itself. Next slide. Reasons for the enforcement revisions. 2017, the county attorney's office created a county administrative enforcement and appeals procedure ordinance. The intent was to streamline the process and to impose administrative penalties. They also wanted to send violations to the county hearing officer rather than the court system. However, there were two recent events that require us to change this enforcement section. One being the termination of 2007 hauler agreements, so the acceptable waste delivery agreement. As you recall, we couldn't come to an agreement with the haulers. And so we actually had to go the ordinance route instead of the contract language. So that means the contract remedies for the violation are no longer available under the contract that was terminated. We also, if you remember, we created four new classes within the ordinance. So we have an A license, a B license, a C license, and a D license. And some of the businesses are new to environmental resources oversight. And we want a range of enforcement options that will help promote compliance with our ordinance standards. And so enforcement revisions need to restore language that existed before on the new ordinance, before the 2017 changes. And then we also want to add language from other ordinances that we can tap into that gives us more options with dealing with violations, like criminal charges, civil injunction relief, notice of violations, administrative hearing process, statutory process to declare public health nuisances and clean authorization for solid waste, collection through property tax assessments, and license suspension and revocation if needed. And so I just want to thank Tom Canaan because Tom really put together these changes. And so if you have any specific questions, Tom's here to address those. But in Section 1, the violations are part of it. The reason allows more flexibility in dealing with multiple violations. That's the main reason why we wanted to change subsection 1. In subsection 2, authority to pursue enforcement. The reason for this change is including more enforcement options to pursue violations. Next slide, Clar. Subsection 3, the criminal violations, we wanted to restore language before 2017. That includes misdemeanor fines for violations. And then subsection 4, the civil administration, administrative violations. The reason, including more enforcement options to pursue violations. So again, the same. And then subsection 5, criminal violations enforced in court. Restore the language before 2017. And then the next couple are just to be reformatted. Tom just reformatted the language for subsections 6, 7, and 8. And so with that, any questions related to the ordinance changes?
Mr. Chair. Yes, go ahead. Mr. Chair, Mr. Hill or Mr. Canaan, can you help me understand what would constitute criminal violation of a solid waste ordinance?
Sure. So if a hauler violated some language that was in the solid waste ordinance, or, I'll give you another example, let's say a business purposely just kept dumping their solid waste on their property and they were told, we were giving them civil notices, basically indicating you've got a deadline to clean them up. The notices weren't having the desired effect after we'd set those deadlines. At some point, we want to make sure that we've got criminal penalties in our toolbox with the ability to have the sheriff's office issue a citation if needed and pursue a criminal case in court. It would be a rare situation. And I'll be the first to admit that these were things that were, again, were in the ordinance prior to the creation of the administrative enforcement and appeals ordinance in 2017. They are also already in other county ordinances, like the planning and zoning ordinances, for example. So honestly, when I did this, I went out largely to the planning and zoning ordinances and borrowed much of the language that's already on the books in the planning and zoning context and brought it back into the solid waste ordinance. But it's helpful for those cases where you've got a kind of recalcitrant violator who basically says, "I don't care," nothing short of facing the possibility of jail time and/or a significant financial penalty will cause them to comply with the requirements of the solid waste ordinance.
Well, that's helpful. I'm wondering if there's any specific examples from our recent history that would be, you would have considered a criminal complaint?
I don't think anything in the recent, recently that I can think of, you know, since I've been in an apartment, that would rise to that level. But it just gives us, like Tom said, that flexibility if something were to happen.
So it's going through my mind as we've had an experience in Arnoko and we had an experience with a foreclosed property that the county inherited with a lot of solid waste and contamination on it, that it wouldn't apply in those circumstances.
You mean the former Penns property out in Haverhill Township?
Yep.
That's a good question. The problem, of course, in any case that you're going to take to court is being able to show that the person who's going to be charged actually did, let's say, the unlawful deposit of the solid waste on the property. Part of the problem there was, we got the property through the tax forfeiture process. In essence, if the law got broken, it had been broken months, if not years, before, and nobody from the county organizational structure was there to witness whatever might have been criminal behavior.
I guess I'm thinking that there would have been an opportunity for the township officers or for the county public works folks to observe that there were piles of tires and other things happening on that property. And with, but, but that's a private property that was, was being, was managing, was a site for solid waste, wasn't managing the solid waste. Would that kind of situation apply? Or is it only going to apply to haulers and to businesses who contract with haulers?
No, it could apply to private individuals and/or businesses that are operating a site like the Penns property was. I mean, they were effectively running an illegal, unpermitted, solid waste disposal site. But again, we didn't find out about that until years later.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Excuse me, would there be any obligation in those kinds of situations on townships or other cities to do any kind of enforcement around that?
I think the primary responsibility lies with the counties as far as solid waste enforcement goes. But having said that, we do really, I think, have to rely on the townships to kind of be our eyes and ears because our staff is limited and we don't have the ability to be everywhere at once. And so another Penns-type situation arises in the future and the township's aware of it. Certainly, passing that on to the ER staff would be helpful so that we can get on it more in a speedy fashion rather than happen in that particular case you're alluding to.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanjum, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have a couple. And I'm not sure if you have your document up there or not. But I think this one's easy for you, Tony. On page, our page 27 of the document, nothing, at least at this point, relative to yard wastes, leaves and grass changed, is that right, under the composting?
No, yeah, you're correct, yeah.
Okay. And so then I have another one, which is probably more for the attorney. You probably don't have this either, but it's access to property. And on our page 62, 351002, it talks about, and this is, language is proposed to be stricken.
Oh, excuse me, Fisher, are you on the word packet number or the ordinance page number? On page 62?
I'm on the boulder 62.
62, thank you, okay, I'm with you now.
62 and 48, depending which number you want.
Thank you, that helps.
So what's being stricken is access to property for inspection and/or enforcement action shall be with the consent of the owner or pursuant to law. And that's proposed to be stricken. And then on the following page, 6450, in subdivision 6B, about halfway down or so, it says, "The environmental resource department staff may enter an affected property and post a written or printed notice on the property, stated, et cetera, et cetera." Anyway, we go from a situation where you need consent or a warrant, probably, to get into somebody's property, to one that just says, carte blanche, the environmental person can enter a property presumptively, at least by virtue of written ordinance, without pursuant to law.
I guess I'm not sure that that section actually changed.
That help me understand why it didn't or how it didn't?
Because the language that I added, I believe in that section, was simply a reformatting of what was already in the solid waste ordinance. It didn't, there was no intent to change that. The things that I added were basically a ability to pursue a civil injunction against a person who's failing to comply, adding a misdemeanor criminal penalty, et cetera.
I wish we had the lines numbered, but about midway down on paragraph B, if you can see that.
Are you on subdivision 6?
Subdivision 6, about midway down. The environmental resources representative upon written notice, pardon me, environmental resources staff may enter upon the affected property and post a written notice, et cetera, et cetera. It doesn't suggest any more pursuant to law or with the consent of the owner. It just says, at least the way I read it, that you can, that you carte blanche have access without due process to any property.
I think if I'm reading the section that you're referring to, the process is that if ER finds that there's a threat, that they're to post a notice on the property. That section that I think you're reading is preceded by, if the owner of the property is unknown or absent, or has no known representative upon whom the notice can be served, then they can enter upon the property, only if those preconditions exist.
Okay.
So, yes, I mean, generally, you're correct that they'll seek consent in order to enter onto a property. If they don't get consent, generally, we recommend that they see what they can see from an adjacent public right of way, or let's say, an adjoining private property owner that might give consent for ER staff to be on the adjoining private property with permission. But if that's not enough, we would seek an administrative search warrant, basically, get authority to be on the property for their code enforcement staff to see what they need to see.
Mr. Chair, then, just maybe to backtrack then, because that's, that's good clarification. Why would we have, though, stricken on page 6248, 351002, which says, basically, if there is an available property owner, you have to have consent or pursue a warrant? That's no more in any of this language that I see with the adoption of this ordinance.
Okay, and maybe that was an inadvertent error in the striking through process. Can I dig into that a little bit further? And perhaps you just table this for later in the meeting?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
If it's determined that we need to tweak it some more, we could table it for two weeks, basically, and come back and handle it then?
Mr. Chair, one more, and I sort of fall on both sides of the property rights thing. But then I also, I just happen to be a victim of a property in my district that, that I would suggest it's a situation where there's a hoarder and the neighbors are quite concerned because there's stuff in bags all over, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And, and the neighbors generally believe their property is devalued by this particular house and the way things are at that house. And yet, it's hard to, like, prove a public health hazard. Because, and it's also hard. And all they observe, of course, is the situation where, looking from their deck or their front yard to another front yard, or peeking over the backyard fence, they see things which are kind of disturbing to them, at least from the standpoint of their property values and the kind of place that's next to them. I was just wondering if in subdivision 6, on 6450, and I just sketched some language on paragraph A, you know, what do you look for in terms of what really represents a so-called public health threat? A phrase in there that would be along the lines of, "Conditions which may reasonably be considered to lead to rodent or insect infestation." Is rodent and is potential rodent and insect infestation, is that a public health hazard?
I would say it is, yes, yep.
Because presumptively, of course, I mean, the situation, at least in the situation I'm talking about, is, you know, could, could lead to that. I'm not saying it is because I don't know, I haven't seen anything. I mean, is that, is that reasonable inclusion language? I'd say, "Conditions which, which may reasonably be considered to lead to insect or rodent infestation."
I guess my only concern is there might be other situations, especially where we've just been through this serious public health pandemic, for example, that there are other ways beyond just a rodent or insect infestation that could still threaten public health.
I'm wondering, Mr. Chair, if Mr. Geeson has some insight since this was, how are public health nuisances defined or public health threats defined?
Thank you, Commissioner Cascaden, Commissioner, or Mr. Chair and Commissioner Sanjum. Yeah, it's, that interpreting that statute is sometimes challenging. One big criteria historically public health has used is whether what's happening in, within a home actually impacts those surrounding the home in the public, per se. Is it really impacting the public or is it confined to kind of the, what's happening inside the property? Which is, has been kind of a defining line on how we've handled it historically. It's always a challenge to define what potential for something because there is that, particularly with a rodent infestation. If something in the house, that could attract rodents. But with the defining lines historically we've used in public health have been, is there obvious evidence of the neighbors being impacted through sewage going outside their home or other animals, you know, that are inside the home that may, the feces may be outside the home? So it's really separating out what's a private nuisance from what would be considered a public health nuisance. And so, not always clear lines, but it's, it's, it's state statute. I think Tom defines there's private statutes, public, or private nuisances, public nuisances, and public health nuisances. And that third category is really the emphasis where it's impacting as a threat to the public, per se, or others outside of a property.
Mr. Chair, just, so I navigate subdivision 6A on 6450. You know, from a lawyer's perspective, frankly, anybody's perspective, an actual or public threat to public health. Well, so much of this is in the eyes of the beholder, such as a public health nuisance. I don't know if that's defined in public law or not. It's capitalized, maybe that means it's defined in public law what a public health nuisance is, I don't know. But, and it sources of filth, well, that's in the eyes of the beholder. And causes, or causes of sickness, boy, that's pretty subjective. I'm just trying to add a phrase of clarity to some degree to this that would, would help make decisions about whether this is a, any situation like that might be a situation which is pursued or not pursued.
It's a rare enough circumstance. And I'd be willing to bet that ER staff would be more than happy to talk to public health staff and get them involved in a particular situation, help them determine whether it's rising to the level of a public health nuisance, should that scenario occur.
Mr. Chair, one added comment to that, too, is, that is basically how we've, we would respond and we would, between public health, environmental resources, maybe adult and family services, where it's often not necessarily, it's more than, it's complex than just the contamination may be there. There may be mental health issues, there may be, the fire marshal may be involved. But typically, when we have these situations, we rally all of the related departments to really assess it from all perspectives, but ultimately to try to get to solving the problem, which often has more of the behavioral side of things and then the environmental side of things. So it's, it's, we rally around kind of the whole team to assess the situation.
Chair, it's, you know, somewhere, you know, who gets called on this? It's those of us that carry the public badge. And then so then, we, you know, we, we make our calls and, well, you know, it's, you know, if you can't get into the house, how do you know that a hoarder may just have this house packed of, you know, it could be a potential fire hazard? And certainly in a neighborhood, you know, a house, a fire is a risk to houses adjacent to it and things like that. Or it could be vermin, et cetera, et cetera, and so on and so forth. But everybody's sort of kind of run from it because it's that private property owner and what happens in the house is, it is sort of public business, but it's also not. And so, nothing ever happens, there's no intervention. That's my experience, at least.
Mr. Chair, a quick observation is, one is, I'm not sure that we have a public health nuisance defined in our policies, but as I'm looking for a definition of public health nuisance, I'm discovering that several counties do. And they have a nuisance ordinance. And so, for instance, Commissioner, in Washington County, public health nuisance has been given to by Minnesota statutes, but not limited to, "Any condition which poses an immediate and direct hazard to human health if left unremedied due to the existence of the condition itself or due to the immediate threat of transmission of disease through insects, animals, or other means of transmission or infections." So to your question, if we, that public health nuisance, since we define public health nuisance, it would cover the circumstance you seem to be describing in terms of the public health risk. But it also seems like the question I would have is, who enforces that? Is it, is it public health, since we are the board of health for the entire county? Or is it the city where there is a neighborhood issue? And I don't, I don't know that we're going to resolve that today in terms of the solid waste ordinance, but we may want to put a pin in it for future discussion and look at it in the context of your constituents' concerns. And there's actually one in my district as well. So we may want to look at that more broadly.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I remember in reading some coverage of, regarding the flavored tobacco ban that's in discussion also throughout the state of Minnesota, that there has, there's some language, including public health nuisance with regard to flavored tobacco. And that there are three people in the state of Minnesota that can declare a public health nuisance. There's one person in the state of Minnesota, but three in Olmsted County, and that would be the county attorney, city attorney, or the attorney general. And those three people could declare it. And so if that sheds a little light on this discussion, it could be helpful.
Thanks.
I could also offer that I'm pretty sure in chapter 145A, which is kind of alluded to in here, the environmental resources laws look to the public health laws in the Minnesota statutes for this particular section because, basically, there's language in there that says, if the county has to go in and do a cleanup, for example, we have the ability to assess the cost that we incur on the property taxes. In that part of one, chapter 145A, I'm virtually certain there is also a defined term for public health nuisance in there that certainly could be brought into our ordinance and adopted as part of it, if you think that that's important.
Mr. Chair, we don't have to, like, solve this today, we're not going to anyway, we know that. But I'm okay approving this, but maybe with a little proviso that we, you know, maybe can circle back and just explore this a bit further because, I mean, it happened in the 90s as a city council member. It's happening now as a county board member, 30 years later, this, this, this happens in neighborhoods. I mean, I think about the, and I don't know a lot about the, you know, the tire pile out there in Haverhill, but I mean, predictably, that, that was certainly probably a place for insect and vermin infestation and things like that. And so is that a public health hazard? I mean, again, it's so much in the eyes of the beholder, you get into the words and the clarity is always something you have to search for and make an opinion on it. But to the extent we could make it as clear as possible, and this public health definition, nuisance definition would be helpful, except we haven't defined it in our, in our ordinance yet. Maybe we could come back and have some more conversation about that.
Okay, so this is, this is where I think we are, is that we would like to look at the public health nuisance portion of it. This ordinance proposal change appears to be good as it is. However, we would like to go back to HHH, probably that's the correct committee, and have them look at a stronger wording. And if a new definition is needed to create the new definition of what constitutes a public health nuisance. Would that be all right with you?
Mr. Chair, I would move with adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Okay, before we do that, we have a public hearing. Thank you very much, appreciate that, but we have a public hearing and then we'll come back. All right.
Thank you. So that wraps up the enforcement part of it. So I just want to talk about the, there's a couple of minor fee schedule changes, language changes. And the first one is starting to see more of these high-energy lithium-ion batteries at a recycling center and hazardous waste facility. And these high-energy batteries are greater than 300 watt-hours, are typically found in e-bikes, scooters, snow blowers, chainsaws, lawnmowers. And what we're looking at is a change of fee schedule to only accept these LIBs under 300 watt-hours. And then, Clar, the next slide. So this is the change in the fee schedule, you can see at the bottom in red, the lithium up to 300 watt-hours, still free for businesses, excuse me, for residents. And then as well as, there's a charge for businesses which haven't, which hasn't changed. And then, like I said, only accept them under 300 watt-hours. And the reasons for this is the facility limitations. We don't have adequate separation between where the flammable area is in the, in our hazardous waste facility and where we're processing the batteries. I think some of you that were on the tour last week probably saw that, those physical limitations. And then there's also fire code issues with storing these high lithium-ion batteries. And then we're also looking at safety, staff safety issues. They're larger, they're heavier, they require more staff time, there's higher voltage and current within these batteries. And then also the cost coverage. The current battery vendor would charge up to 250 per battery as required by Department of Transportation packaging. And also, it costs to manage these high-energy lithium ions up to $300, $400. And so those are some of the reasons why we want to limit the acceptance of these. The activities moving forward, we've established an internal battery and worker group that's working with the MPCA, other counties, in developing management practices as well as how we collect and store them and end of life. We're working with our vendor to see if they'd be accepting these high-energy LIBs. Just as a note, the e-bike battery, there's an e-bike battery recycling network established in Minnesota, take the batteries back. And that's what we'd like to see is development of extended producer responsibility law in Minnesota, looking at that in greater depth. And then there are some private vendors that are already accepting these batteries. And then the next, just a small clarification, it's not in your packet, but just a small change to the landfill's fee schedule. Full loads of tires, we had for recycling in there. And what we'd like to do that is, with prior approval before, with environmental resources, because what we're finding out is that all tires can be recycled. And so we'd like the ability to process them out of the landfill, the ones that we can't, and use it as tire-derived fuel for the waste energy facility. So just that minor clarification in the fee schedule related to the landfill. And the last one is just a clarification in the OCRC, the recycling center. And that, you can see on bulky items, item C, love seats. And then we wanted to strike out single sectionals per piece with a height of bed or recliner because we're getting some customers that, we're getting, doing a exchange with them on what exactly a single sectional means. And so just a clarification to help staff out at the recycling center. So those are the changes that we're proposing, and can take any further questions?
So, Mr. Hill, currently, the county has not taken an action on the producer responsibility, federal legislation.
So is that something that you would recommend that we eventually take a look at to help with our recycling processes?
Yeah, and there's, um, there, all of these are coming down the line. We have solar, uh, we have mattresses, all these different materials are coming down with extended producer responsibility laws, um, in the state, and there's actually some at the Capitol right now. Um, we just want to make sure that, um, that they're written right, that they're written appropriately, and that the county's not stuck with the fees, you know, required, that it actually goes back to the manufacturer, and that all costs are covered from collection, you know, through the entire process, but yes.
My understanding is it's twelve states that have signed on to that federal legislation. Is that correct?
Um, I believe that's correct, yes.
Minnesota has not, so it's something maybe worthwhile looking at.
Yeah.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the commissioners before we open up the public hearing? All right.
Thank you.
We shall open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak for or against the proposed changes to the solid waste management ordinance? Is there anybody here that wishes to speak for or against the proposed changes to the solid waste management ordinance? Is there anybody online that wishes to speak? All right, last time, is there anybody in the room that wishes to speak to for or against the proposed changes to the solid waste management ordinance?
Move to close the public hearing.
Have a motion to close the public, and a second. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, public hearing is closed. Now we shall take your motion. Commissioner, send him.
Uh, Mr. Chair, members, uh, I would move, uh, adoption of, uh, Chapter 3500, the Olmsted County Solid Waste Management Ordinance as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Hill and Mr. Kenyon for your good work. All right, we shall move to the agenda, um, number four, consent agenda, uh, to approve the March 21, 2023 Olmsted County Board Minutes, uh, to approve the annual liquor license for Char's Country Palace, letter C to, uh, the contract award for C dash 22 dash 5, which is the CASA 5, letter D indirect cost method for Minnesota Department of Health grants, letter E joint powers agreement with the state of Minnesota, Mindot, letter F maintenance agreements with the city of Stuartville and the city of Chatfield, letter G proclaimed child abuse prevention month, letter H proclaimed National Public Health Week, letter I proclaimed sexual assault awareness month, letter J professional services agreement with HDR Incorporated for SP 055 dash 070 dash 025, letter K snowmobile trail grant, and letter L final plat for the Tynes Deer Farm. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? I'm looking for a motion to approve. So, all right, I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, the consent agenda has been approved. All right, agenda number five, informal agenda items, the Rochester Area Economic Development Incorporated in Olmsted County update. Mr. Wade, I believe that you have a presentation. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you very much. Thank you for having me. My name is John Wade. I'm president of Rochester Area Economic Development Incorporated. We are a regional economic development authority that works, uh, not only primarily with Rochester and the entire Olmsted County, but we also serve, uh, Dodge, Wabashaw, and Fillmore counties as well. And the way we do that is through three primary areas, and I will forward a presentation after I'm done, and you will have that for your own record and the record of the county. The county is a, is a partner of ours, as are many other organizations, as we focus on three key areas. Those areas include the entrepreneurial sector, if you will. And we have created, along with partners, something called the Economic Development Center, which some of you have had the opportunity to see. It's located on First Avenue on the sixth floor of the Minnesota Biobusiness Center. And we brought together a number of organizations, uh, the African Innovation Hub, the Black Entrepreneurial Teams Network, SCORE, um, and, uh, our Southeast Minnesota Capital Fund, the Collider, our operations, as well as the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center, which, uh, serves actually eleven counties, uh, that organization does, with three full-time staff and eighteen consultants, and provides business advisory services to get sometimes the, the folks that need, actually, this is where they spend all of their time, people that need the most help getting started in business, people that don't have banking relationships, people that have bad FICO scores, people that have really a good idea and they need a business plan. And that organization, SBDC, the Small Business Development Center, which is part of the SBA, the Small Business Administration, does amazing work. And every day, and the numbers are incredible. I've shared this with some of you, that on a given Saturday where they have open houses, where we have really great, uh, guests from the area, including attorneys, financial services folks, and the SBDC staff, it is not uncommon that you would have thirty-five or forty people in that room looking for help on how they could start a business, how they have an idea and they'd like to start a business. It's really something to see. About seventy-five percent of the people in that room don't look like me, which for a variety of reasons is probably a good thing. But, that said, uh, we serve and are proud to serve, um, a high, uh, concentration of, um, of diverse community, and it's pretty cool to see. And that, that so many of our citizens are looking for a better way of their own lives, which not only includes education, public health, and all those other wonderful things that we do as a society, but helping people, really helping them, uh, get the tools they need to, uh, engage in this free enterprise system right here is pretty cool. That's a little bit about the SBDC. You will see a follow-up report that'll give you all the numbers, because we track everything at Ready. The SBDC, being federally funded and, uh, state-funded and county-funded, um, tracks every number. Now, how does that funding work? Because we come to you sometimes looking for resources for these things. You say, geez, you get that federal grant. It's a federal grant of about 250,000 that has to be matched or none of it gets spent. If there's not a local match, there's no money. So it's really important that we do everything we can in the private sector. So who supports it? The majority of it does come from the financial sector or the private sector. And then we are also supported by the city of Rochester and Olmsted County and other groups. Specific to the county and economic development, I'll talk a little bit about a couple of things. We work very closely with all of the communities in Olmsted County to advance economic development opportunity. There are not as many tools in the county as there are in the city to assist with economic development. Therefore, we bring and partner with other organizations to help other cities do what they do really well. And we are entirely dependent, as this community, on the neighborhood, as I like to say. And we have very strong partnerships with the community, um, whether that be Byron, um, Pine Island, or Chatfield, or Stuartville. We are currently, um, developing a new model with those communities that Byron and Stuartville have taken the lead on. Um, Chatfield's been very involved too. But to, to really look at how we can better serve collectively all of these communities. Because when we also talk about developable land and the shortage of developable land here, which is a very real issue for the city of Rochester, Byron, for example, has 400 acres that could be developed, or that's, that's ready to be developed. That's really important, because right now, we get a lot of pressure from the state when somebody comes and says, we'd like a developable site, a shovel-ready site. It's often talked about in St. Paul. Uh, we don't have many of them, particularly over the 30-acre size. So it's really, we, we work hard to, to look at that. We also have something called REVEST, which is a private equity real estate investment fund that, that citizens can invest in, and that we do impact investing with those funds to not only look at high-return investments related to real estate, but incenting, um, affordable, and I know there's a lot of definitions for that, but if we look at sixty-five percent, sixty-five, am I, we try to look at that range and invest in properties like that. One of the greatest challenges, of course, we see that we all know, is it's not just rental availability, and there are a lot of projects that we could invest in from a rental perspective, but we also have, um, far greater challenges with ownership. And how do we, working together with, um, you and the coalition and others, look at ways that we can provide meaningful investment into homeownership, whether that be a traditional-looking home, or even a condominium-type model, something that can get, um, I believe, more folks into homeownership? So there is real estate. We also have, um, a private capital fund. You read about Numeric maybe recently in the paper, that there was an announcement that, that a company is being based here with thoracic surgeon, as Dr. Aho has developed this great company. We are investors in that. We have seven million dollars private equity raised that we invest in companies here, primarily, that often are in the biotech area. And one of our greatest areas of growth, in addition to services and goods, is really the biotech sector, because we have so much of it here, obviously, and there's so much innovation. We look at almost a project every other week here, and there are great stories here. Viriad, uh, Rion you hear about. Um, we talked a little bit about Rion at our annual meeting. They make this, that some of you don't need, I do, that, that they make these, like, lotions that make your skin real smooth and, like, no wrinkles and pay two, you know, you pay $276, $276 a bottle for this stuff. So it's kind of one of those things, but the company's doing incredibly well, based here. But what they really do that's remarkable is they've come up with, um, a treatment for radiation poisoning. And about 300,000 women a year are severely burned by radiation related to breast cancer treatment, radiation. And they developed a treatment for that. It also has military interest as well, and we are working with Rion to advance, um, an application, uh, through the Department of Defense. Doesn't seem like that's something you might think your local economic development organization gets into, but we do, because it's about growing and diversifying this economy. We also have an economic development fund that came out of the 2012 sales tax. That fund is down to about a million five right now. It's generated 150 million dollars in economic activity, 180 full-time jobs, at an average salary of 65,000 dollars. Average salary of 65,000 dollars. Those jobs, those businesses are sticky. They stay here. And, um, it's a revolving loan fund. We have the opportunity to grant out of that fund, which we did, for companies that they get in particularly, uh, at a very limited basis, we have utilized some of those funds to support business staying here. The vast majority of those funds go into, uh, companies and, and a zero-interest rate where they pay us back. Once that money is paid back, we reinvest it. It's evergreen, if you will. Hence, moving to today, the legislature has, uh, is considering two bills. There are now one in the Senate Tax Committee, and there, there were two bills. One had the four, uh, interest areas of the city of Rochester related to their sales tax request. There was a separate bill that had the four, plus something called the Ever Ready Fund, which is a 10-million-dollar fund that would be used to invest in businesses here. What's the here? The here was 10 million dollars in the metropolitan statistical area originally as we proposed it. It has been improved upon, so today, the two bills have been consolidated in the Senate into one. So Senator Bolden's bill and Senator Nelson's bill is now one. And in that bill, it not only has the four areas that the city is requesting as part of their sales tax authorization, but it has an additional one. And that is something called the Ever Ready Fund, which would be 5 million dollars invested in Rochester and 5 million outside of the city of Rochester in the metropolitan statistical area, that would be used for loans, and in very limited cases, grants to grow and diversify our economy. So we would use what we learned from the, from the Economic Development Fund created by the 2012 legislation. We have improved upon it and now have, if we, it is successfully advanced through the legislature and signed, obviously, I should say not obviously, the, the, uh, is that local sales tax, uh, has to be passed by the citizens of Rochester. Then that money would be invested under the same criteria, whether it's a business in Rochester or a business elsewhere, but there are two funds, two amounts of money within the 10 million dollars. That is referred to as the Ever Ready Fund, and it's been, um, again, there is now one bill in the Senate that has that in it, as well as the four that the city has earlier requested. That's a very good thing. So we, we will continue to advance other opportunities as we can. We work closely with your administration. We have a great group of people to work with, um, that care very much, not only about what goes on in this city, but what goes on in this county. We find them to be great partners. We had the opportunity to work together with Olmsted County on the Senate site, and we learned a lot from that. I think the county learned a lot, we did, and I know as you go forward and grow forward with that property, um, we will all have more to say about that, and, and be engaged and involved in helping the county in any way that we can to continue to advance your own development, not to mention waste of energy and all the other good things that you're involved in that we're very interested in. So whether it's land, whether it's investing in businesses or organizations that advance economic development, working with the neighborhood, and looking at innovative ways that we can work better together and better serve them, that's a little bit about what Ready's about. We have a lot of numbers to back this up. I'm really proud of that. I'm proud of the Economic Development Fund. And some of you know this, that over 54% of the notes out of the loans out of the Economic Development Fund have gone to women or minority-owned businesses. We're proud of our numbers, and we will continue to make opportunities available to advance economic development. Mr. Chair, I had no idea how much time I had to speak today, but that's, those are kind of the highlights.
We appreciate that. I, I know that there are many highlights that Ready has. It's hard to narrow them down to.
Right, and again, we did provide a separate, I, uh, provided to, uh, Mr. Keeson, so you, you'll be forwarded that entire detail.
Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Wade?
I have a question.
All right.
Uh, you have mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that there were three main parts that you had addressed. I only really caught the entrepreneurial center as a main part.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
What were the other two? Could you clarify?
Sure, thank you. The three categories primarily are the entrepreneurial development space. We, uh, in addition to the Economic Development Fund, we have something called the Emerging Entrepreneurial Loan Fund, which is a fund through deed and hundred-thousand-dollar increments. And, uh, we are also working with the city. We also participate in the Main Street Grant Program and the processing of that outside of the DMC zone. The original Main Street Grant Program was limited within the DMC zone. Since it has gone outside of that zone, we are participating in that. So there's that, I can put that into an entrepreneurial space. In the economic development category, if you will, that's land use, uh, making sure that we have, as I said, shovel-ready sites. It's working together with our real estate investment portfolio and looking at and working collaboratively with, uh, organizations that you do and Olmsted County to look at affordable housing and what we can help do to drive some of that investment. And of course, working with the area communities where, for example, I've, I looked at their agenda recently for the economic development category. They meet also separately with a number of people throughout the MSA that are also involved, including Olmsted County. And, uh, the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, uh, we worked with, and I applaud their efforts in creating their own real estate investment fund, which we believe will also benefit our own real estate investment fund. There are a number of ways that, that we connect. So there's economic development, that also includes deed. But deed also bounces over into that entrepreneurial space because of the aforementioned categories. And then, um, besides all of that, um, we do a lot of education outreach related to, uh, for example, I shared it, and, and these do cross over, Commissioner Talke Smith, because, um, they're all somewhat related in some ways. But we do have, um, in that space, for example, is education training often related in that category to the SBDC, because the SBDC is, um, under our umbrella, they are a division of ours, but they- Because the SBDC is under our umbrella, they are a division of ours, but they also work very independently. For many, many years, they were under the protection, if you rather, the sponsor, the host site was Minskew and particularly RCTC, as other SBDC organizations had been for many, many years. They were located at the Heinz Center. We reached an agreement with RCTC. We folded, incorporated SBDC into our portfolio. And so I, those three categories that, and thank you for the clarification, that's on me, that, that, so I look at the SBDC, the traditional economic development roles of working together with people to acquire land or infrastructure, whatever, to build a project out or expand the business. And then there's that big category of the entrepreneurial space and all the tools financial that we often deploy to get there. And I apologize for not making that clear earlier.
Commissioner Kiskaden.
Mr. Wade, you gave us an update on the, the local option sales tax status. One thing you didn't mention was with the four projects now, is it now four, five? Anyway.
Five now.
Five now. Is legislature requiring a vote on every project or will this legislature allowing a single vote on all four?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner, the, right now there are two, the, as I understand it, today it would be separated. I can say, I'll yield to somebody in the state government. However, there is a movement because a number of cities have more than one to consolidate those on a ballot. Currently, as I understand the law, that they are, there would be four separate vote, or five actually. It would be, you know, the four, the four projects by the city and then the Ever Ready Fund would be separate on the ballot. However, there is a movement to consolidate those for one vote for the package. Thank you. Certainly, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sancho.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to offer maybe fifteen seconds of accolades. I think we're just so fortunate to have both Mr. Wade and certainly the Ready Organization in our community. I've spent my whole life signing the back of a check. I have never signed the front of a check. I've never had an employee. I've never done any of that. And I think about organizations like Ready that support people that have the courage, have the intellectual wherewithal to do that. And to walk alone in that entrepreneurial path, that journey has to be an act of courage that I can't personally imagine, but thank you for all you do to help those that do walk that path.
Thank you. And we do post these events that the SBDC hosts and they're usually on Saturday mornings because it's convenient for, for people that are currently working or are there to come. And I'll make sure that you're notified of those too. We have them formerly, the 4H building is the, known as the, the building at the County Fairgrounds.
Olmsted.
Yes, yes, that wonderful, wonderful building. And I'll invite you there. And you could see, just observe these folks because it's great risk for people, often not making a lot of money, often having a dream to start. It is one of the favorite things I do. All these other things, we're moving around lots of big amounts of money to advance economic development. You go out there and see people that are really sacrificing to improve their lives and their children's. It's pretty cool. So thank you.
Are there any other questions from the Commissioners? I just wanted to add my thanks to Ready. We've had a long partnership. We appreciate the partnership. But from my point of view, the county's interest in, in Ready is not only in the economic development for the entire county, but also to provide good employment for the people of the county when they come here because they, they read about Olmsted County. They see that it's a great county. They see that it's a growing county and they see that it's a great place to live, but we also have to have jobs for the full spectrum of people in the county. So we, of course, we, we are aware that because we have male clinic in town, that we have a lot of advanced degrees, but not everybody has one and everybody needs a good job and a good paying job. So we appreciate the efforts that you have in looking at the economic development that provides employment for everybody.
Thank you. It's a team effort and we very much appreciate the support of Olmsted County as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
All right. Mr. Schneider, the Olmsted County Fair Board. You want to introduce yourself?
Scott Schneider, I'm the President of the Olmsted County Fair. Thank you for having me here. And I want to start off by thanking the county Commissioners and the county employees for all the work they've done at Graham Park and the, and the support they've given the fair. It wouldn't happen without your support. Right now from the Sheriff's Department to Steve Flynn and his staff does a wonderful job out there. And I've been on some of Sheila's committees and really want to thank you for the improvements that have happened over the last several years at the fairgrounds. It's definitely heading in the right way and we get a lot of positive comments from people that come to the fair. And that being said, the fair board is obviously a volunteer fair board that works very hard. We've departmentalized, we've finally, for the first time, have a full board. We've always had open spots. We finally have a full board and we're finding a lot more people willing to help and get involved. That being said, at the, at the state fair convention in January, and then again at the recent District One County Fair Committee meeting we had, we've been getting a lot of praise and a lot of attention for how quickly we were able to turn the fair around as far as safety and making it a safe fair, not having issues and, and having all the young kids that were really disruptive there. How we did that, and there was, there was a lot of, we, at first, you know, we, with law enforcement, we tried to, you know, clamp down on everybody and that didn't work. They just revolted more and made it worse. So we looked at doing outreach and we got involved with the CERT program, which we have come to really appreciate. And even the Sheriff's Department really bought in after they experienced it with them. They work with these kids at their, at the complexes, at the schools, and they know the kids and they know which ones are the truly bad kids and they pointed them out and we were able to remove them. And so they could get through to the other kids. We hired, through the CERT program, we hired their kids along with some supervisors. They were our parking attendants. It was really neat to see how these kids, teaching them how to fill out a W-2, how to fill out applications, how to fill out paperwork. Then they were able to work and participate and feel good about themselves and get a paycheck at the end. And then even a step more than that, both the Deputy Sheriff's Association and the Police Associations, benevolent for their funds, donated five hundred dollars each. And then we got money donated from some of the vendors and we created vouchers and the Sheriff's Department would walk around with those vouchers. And through the CERT people that were on grounds the whole time, because we got some partners to help fund the CERT program, they were there, they'd walk up to the deputies and say, hey, see those four kids there or those five there? We're getting through to those kids. They're, they're actually okay. And so the sheriffs would walk up to them and they'd be like, what did we do wrong? No, hey, you know, he was having fun. Can I buy you some cheese curds? What? Can I get you a corn dog? What? Lemonade? And, and, and started breaking ice and getting, so the kids weren't so afraid of the law enforcement. And it was really neat to see how, before you know it, they're running up to the law enforcement, talking to them. And we had zero incidents. We had no problems. There were no police calls. And even, I'm on the radio listening to the deputy saying, can I get two CERT members here? Can I get two CERT members here? Because when the deputies would walk into a group to try to disperse a group, man, they surround them and they all got their phones out trying to, you know, catch them doing something, you know, retaliating. They're spitting at them, throwing stuff at them, right? The CERT program walks in there, oh, yes, Mr. Andre, yes, Mr. Bud, yes, Miss Lisa. And they, they respect them because they work with them, they know them and they're familiar with them and no problems. And it worked great. So that being said, we didn't want to just be complacent with that. We were like, what can we do more to even get through to more kids? Okay? It was, it was really, the kids that worked for us in the parking, at the end of the week, I went to the owner of the fair carnival and got some wristbands and got them, so they got to go on some rides for free. It was amazing how many of these kids had never been on a ride. They had never been on a ride in their life, they couldn't afford it. And they were, I think they were more happy about that than their paycheck that they got at the end of it. They were so excited. And so this year we, you know, working with the CERT program and they know the kids, we're going to start a program every day of the fair, where at eleven o'clock in the morning, they're going to bring twenty different kids, underprivileged youth, to the fairboard. Okay? We're going to take and give them a tour of 4H and the animal buildings and show them that the fair is more than just the carnival and food vendors, which what you see, right? That this is why, these are here to pay for the kids to show their animals and do things. And then once we're in those buildings, we're going to have, you know, 4H kids, give them the tour of each individual building and talk about their animals and how they raise their animal and how they show and also show it's not just animals. There's non livestock projects, where there's photography or arts and crafts, there's all kinds of different things that you can get involved in. And we're going to give them the tour. And then after going through that tour, then we're going to, we've got, we're finding some partners, we're going to feed them lunch at the stands. We're going to give them cheese curds, corn dogs, no typical fair food. And then the carnival's donating twenty wristbands a day, they go on rides for a couple hours. So we're going to make them include them in the fair where they feel a part of it and then they're going to be less likely to be disruptive. And we found that that worked and we're taking it to the next level now this year. So that being said, the, the fair, our attendance was way up. It was great. 4H numbers are up. There's, there's more kids involved than ever. We have more animals. And we still, you know, we've lost that one building that went down several, four, five years ago, that went down and was never replaced. And that's our problem now is we're running out of space. We're out of space. We, we actually have exhibitors that probably can't come this year because we don't have space for their animals. And I know that, you know, with Sheila, we've found the master plan, there's the idea of building, new building or however it doing down there. The only thing I'd like to say in that is just make sure we do it right. Do it right, right away. Let's, don't do it halfway, don't, you know, piecemeal. I do, I know it's a money issue, but let's, let's really make every attempt to do it right. And I was part of youth hockey when we got the Graham Four Project done, okay? I was on that, I was right in that committee, okay? And, and I know, this isn't the city here, but the city and county proved that they could work together and roach youth hockey also. And I'd like to see something like a partnership that that get involved because obviously a new building there, a nice big building that was done right would be, the economic impact on the whole county and the city of Rochester would be great. It would really, I know youth hockey for a fact will partner in also in, in any kind of building there. Okay? So I'd like to see it done right and, and the first time and not have to, you know, come back later. And I know the money's the issue. I know it's not your guys, you'd like to do a Taj Mahal right away if you could. So just, that's just the fair's perspective on that. Last thing I'd like to, and we really appreciate how you've taken care of that fair for us because honestly, without that, the fair wouldn't be able to be going in the direction it's going. So we really appreciate that. And we do still pay rent and I know the rates are going up at the fairgrounds for all the rents. That'll be a tough hit for the fair. It'll, anything that goes up on us is going to come away from the things we're trying to do positively for the fair. Like I said, we're all volunteers and no one's paid. All the money goes back into the fairgrounds. That being said, for us to do some of the bigger costs that you've seen lately, because the fair doesn't have the money, we've had to use outside promoters. Okay, so the outside promoters do it, they make all the money, we get the parking and we get people on the grounds, but they take the risk. Now we've kind of changed a little bit where we're using local partners that we're getting to invest in these things and to do the events so we can run the money through the fair. So by doing that, there's a state law where the, the sales tax now, we're waiting, we did it wrong, we didn't know this for a while, we just found out. The state sales tax that we pay doesn't go to the state. We get to put it to the county for improvements on Grand Park, for, for fair, fair improvements. Okay? So more we can, more we can do there, the more sales tax we're going to generate, well, a hundred percent will come back to the county to be used at Grand Park, which we'd like to, you know, ask you to consider some way of using that, whatever amount of money, because it could be pretty big, because some of the big acts we have coming, we're starting to bring some national acts in. It could be some pretty good dollar amounts, okay? We'd like the, you to consider, since you're getting that money to use on improvements to the fairgrounds to maybe relieve some of our rent. Okay? But relieving our rent, you'll be getting it on the other end. And at the same time, we also want to make sure that that doesn't just come out of Steve Flynn's budget because he's doing such a wonderful job and he's such a great help for us. We don't want to see, just take it from somewhere else. Okay? So that, that's all. Thank you for your time and if there's any questions.
Yeah. Does any Commissioners have any questions, comments? No. Commissioner Kiskaden.
It looks like we've got more than a minute.
Oh.
One of the questions I have is, I have lots of questions, of course, but when we met, we met with you and the Hockey Association and the Farmers Market, there was a comment made by the Farmers Market that, you know, they come in, they, they have a market during the time of the fair. Would you just comment from the fair board's perspective how well that's working or, or are there any kind of rubs there that we need to be aware of?
Wednesday, they don't do it on the Wednesday. They just do it on the Saturday. We let them in and then people, the one they come to the gate, if they see they're with the Farmers Market, we don't charge them for parking. And it works great. I think it's a great addition and it's neat. We do have a couple vendors that abuse it by staying all day and they don't leave and they take up half the parking lot and they don't want to leave, okay? Because every other week, we're there and we see the Farmers Market and they're out there by one o'clock. Also in the week of the fair, they're still there at two thirty and three o'clock. Okay? That was the only thing, and the new guy running the Farmers Market's great, we talk with him and, and we're working through that to make sure that they, make sure those vendors know that, you know.
And the second question I have is, as we look to the multipurpose facility, and you were just before, to think comprehensively, is the fair board and a place where you can identify what some of your broad needs are that would help inform the planning and the programming?
Well, what I, what I would like to do is, I think, the fair board, we'd get some input from the horse people, the dairy people, the bee people, all the people that, that really, and, and not just for what the fair's used, but a lot of those people, like, we hear that they, they're going to horse shows and sales in other cities that I think would attract here. With Rochester's infrastructure, with hotels and space and easy access and parking, I think it'd be a big draw to draw things on other weekends throughout the year that would really help support that, that building. And I think we'd want to get some of those people involved that would really know what those buildings need to have to attract those types of things, which obviously then we're going to take care of the fair too.
I can't, I can't resist noting that when the market analysis was done, Equestrian Shows were identified as a large potential market, but not, the Grand Park Committee did not feel we'd want to design the facility around a special purpose. So I just would.
Well, I know, I know in some of the plans with the, the big one building, eighty to a hundred thousand square per building had a big horse thing in the back, right? Well, that's where we got, I actually talked to Mark Hickey with youth hockey and youth hockey's willing to fund in on that. If they put refrigeration underneath it in the winter, it'd be an outdoor skating rink, not a hockey rink, skating, just for skating, like an oval, like there's a couple places the cities have. So it would be a neat thing for me, if one of your, some of your kids at practice, other kids could be out doing open skating, it's right there in the Zamboni, can come out and just clean it and, and they would be interested in participating in that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rasmann?
Yeah, just a couple comments to follow up on that question. This is a tremendous opportunity for the fair board to engage, you know, bring us all of your ideas on what this multi-purpose facility needs to be and hope that you all can have a strong voice. And I will actively be supporting that. Passionate about the Olmsted County Fair and can't thank you all enough as volunteers. You put in such tremendous resources and hours to make that fair happen every year and it's absolutely fully volunteer. I'm so happy to hear that you're finally fully staffed and have a full board because it has been many years because it is such an intense position and we ask so much of you. So just have to say thank you for what you continue to do to make Olmsted County Fair a great event.
Well, they, like I said, it's a full board's effort and there's also, there's a lot of people that aren't even on the board that put in a lot of time and effort and a lot of behind the scenes work. They just don't want to be out in the front that do a lot for the fair. It's a group effort. It really is.
And Mr. Chair, Mr. Schneider, a few years ago, when I was following the fair board more actively, you were saying that we have the second largest county fair in the state. Is that, are we still number two?
Yes, it's only behind Steel County and Oritah. That's the only one bigger. Yep.
Chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I, I want to commend you and the fair board and your team for coming up with such a humane and really visionary way to address the, the past youth violence and, and problems that were occurring by inviting them into the fold and, and employing them and training them and including them. It's, it's really visionary and that's, that's exactly the right direction to head when we have the beginnings of problems like that.
when we have the beginnings of problems like that, so thank you for that kind of response to the problems that you faced in years past.
You know, like I said, we, I have to give full credit to both the Sheriff's Department and the CERT program, and how they worked well together. I mean, I knew the Sheriff's Department at first was kind of, after the first day, they were running up to me, oh, this, these guys are great, they're great, you know, they were bought in fully, and they just, I mean, it was really a neat thing to work. And like I said, at the state fair convention and at the county one, everyone wants to come talk to me, they all want to come talk to me, how'd you guys do it? And we told them, and some, we have a couple, they said, we work with some of our community elders and leaders to help, but I said, you know what you need to do is get them, I'll give them the certain people's names here, because they really are organized here, maybe they can train the people in your city how to help and how to get involved. So I mean, it's really, I think it's, it's, well, like I said, we're very proud of it, and we think it's going to spread to other communities also.
Inclusion is powerful, so thank you.
But just like I said, it was a little shock to me, like, some of these workers, when I gave them those wristbands, and they come back after the rides, I got more hugs from them, and they were, they were so excited, it was like, I didn't believe, I didn't realize that, you know, just took for granted, you know, our kids always could go on rides. These kids hadn't, they really have not been given that opportunity, so that was, it was, it really makes us feel good too, we're proud, very proud.
Other Commissioner comments? I just have a few comments. Thank you very much for the work that you do. For the people that are listening, just a little bit of clarification, the improvements that have been done are for Grand Park, right? And the county rents to the fair board about two or three weeks of year, they rent Grand Park to the fair board, and during those two or three weeks, it becomes the fair board that's running the program. So we have a good relationship with the fair board and the county, but I just wanted to clarify that it is Grand Park that we're talking about when we do that. I also appreciate the fact that the number of people that have attended the fair has increased, hopefully that continues, because it certainly is a great venue for the people of Homestead County, and also that you reported that the 4H numbers are up, and my appreciation with the, with the fair board and with the University of Minnesota Extension for the 4H, and hopefully they will find more and more venues for urban kids to participate in 4H, which traditionally has normally been for rural, but I think that there are many opportunities for rural kids, or urban kids to participate as well, and I think that that would be really good for, for Homestead County and for Rochester. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, we are at number six, board and committee reports, all right? Senator Senjum, or, excuse me, Commissioner Senjum?
Briefly, last week, I had the opportunity to participate in what they call the Association of Minnesota Counties Leadership Conference up in Brainerd, that, the ones from Wednesday due into Friday, doing it, yeah, about 125 people, commissioners attended, one individual, his name is Brian Miller, he's sort of, I don't know, a psychoalliance plus a magician, but he did really a great job, and a lot of it was about introspection, about connectivity, about communications, and actually, the Thursday between the, obviously, between the Wednesday and the Friday, was spent just really kind of digging into yourself in a workshop sort of fashion, even to the point, interestingly enough, to write, writing your own obituary, which was a little unusual, but, but it was, it was, it was all good, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question? I don't know how this works, as we move from this into the committee of a whole, does that remain, or could that remain on television? Or at least, I, I think this thing about the next subject we're going to take up, I think that there's a lot of public interest, and I don't know if we switch off on a German or not.
Mr. Geeson, do you have an answer for us?
I know what the current plan is to move over to conference room one, and...
Oh, I see, okay.
However, you know, if we stayed in this venue, I'm going to look to Lisa to see if we can continue with the video?
Yeah, we can.
We could.
Okay.
I, you know, I'll defer to the judgment of the board, but I, I just, I didn't think about moving, but if we were here, I think, this is kind of thing, if we think about, you know, what our community thinks about this, to have a televised, and I know personally, there's a couple people not living in Rochester that are watching and hoping...
Mr. Chair, I would just suggest that our committees of the whole are timed for a very informal conversation and kind of off-the-record conversation in some ways, and when you televise and you really are, I mean, the media does cover, but you really are, I feel a little more constrained to ask the many questions I like to ask, so if, if, I know there are people interested in what our, in what our focus will be, but I'm still learning, and I learn best by asking lots of questions in an informal setting, and I would rather be in informal setting than as a formal board environment with televised conversation. Just sometimes even the side conversations we have in committee of whole, I learn as much from, but if you're going to sit me here, we're going to have presentations, we're going to be televised, it's a different context for learning, and committees of the whole are about delving deep while you're forming your understanding, and not really ready to, to follow through or take action, so I really would prefer...
Mr. Chair, I did, it was more of a curiosity question, whether or not we switch off on a German or not, without thought about moving into another room anyway, if we're going to move into another room, obviously it doesn't work.
I appreciate that, yep. And I would agree with Commissioner Kuskadon's assessment of the committee of the whole. Okay, Commissioner Padoki Smith?
Nothing to report this week.
All right, Commissioner Kuskadon.
Two things, I want to send around a flyer that I got on one of the, one of the many housing things I went to, I just thought this one was particularly useful for, for us as board members, it's an infographic about homeownership, and why homeownership is the solution to the housing crisis, it was put together by Habitat for Humanity and the Urban Institute, and it just has a lot of quick facts, as we, as we try to examine the housing questions before us, there are so many aspects, so many initiatives, and so many different strategies that need to be pursued, but sometimes we need the context of why, and I think what the Habitat for Humanity and Urban Institute has done is to try and look at why homeownership should be the focus, and as you'll probably recall, with the Coalition for Housing, we are really looking a lot at homeownership, particularly for, you know, promoting homeownership overall, having a specific focus on the BIPOC population, looking at our active seniors who want to live independently and still continue to own their own home, looking at preserving the homes that we have, and I just think this is just a, kind of a handy reference, and so I wanted to bring that to you. The second thing I wanted to bring up today, we dealt with it in the admin committee, and we ran out of time in the Human Services Committee today to talk about a briefing that the chairman and I attended last week by the southeastern Minnesota area on aging. And the discussion, the purpose of their meeting last week was to call out that there is an open comment period right now on the State Board of Aging's five-year strategic plan, but specifically of concern is the change in the formula, the interstate or intergovernmental compact on, on how the regional area agencies on aging are funded. And so, the brief synopsis is this, the state of Minnesota gets, since 1960, has been getting funding directly from the federal government for the Older Americans Act. That money is to be spent on services that help move people over 65 out of poverty and into stable, stable situation. We all know that our population over 65 is growing, and the state of Minnesota has had six regional area agencies on aging, and they do things like congregate meals, meals or meals on wheels, tour services, counseling for seniors, a whole variety of services, and they particularly serve the rural parts of our state, a little bit, a little bit harder to reach. Well, so what's happening now is that the state administration's Board on Aging has decided that they would like to add a seventh area agency on aging. So what they are proposing to do is, I should say one other thing, is that every five years they have to do a strategic plan, and every 10 years, they change the formula that they use for allocating those Older American Act dollars. So these things are coming together right now, they're doing their five-year strategic plan, they're redoing their formula, and they want to add another area agency on aging for tribal governments. And as they do that, what they're, instead of proposing that there be additional funding for the, for a seventh area agency on aging, they are proposing to change the formula for the existing area agencies on aging, and the net result is that for the southeast counties, the 11 counties in southeastern Minnesota, there would be a $250,000 a year reduction in Older American Act money that comes to our region. I would view this as robbing Peter to pay Paul. So, what we would like to do, what the chair and I have talked about, and I hope to talk to our legislative committee and our admin committee, but today, our legislative committee didn't meet, and the admin only had two of us there, what we would like to do is send a letter to this comment from the, from Homestead County Board during the comment period to the Board of Aging, raising questions about this decision to reduce the funding for the southeastern Minnesota area agency on aging. That's section one. So, use the comment period, which is a 30-day comment period. The second thing we would like to do is to alert the other 10 counties in southeastern Minnesota, Region Nine of AMC, that this is a pending action by the Board of Aging, and encourage them to express their own views of, maybe they, I would, I wouldn't imagine any of us would think that this is a, a good thing for our region. And the third thing we think that maybe should be pursued is to alert our legislative delegation that this action is pending, and they would have the opportunity to make sure that the funding isn't reduced if they add the seventh area, or that they delay adding the seventh area agency in Asia until funding is available. And so, this sort of a committee report, that, that the admin committee with just two of us, and the legislative committee, we've talked to the, to Senator, to Commissioner Senjum about this, but I think the three of us are in agreement that those three actions would be prudent, given the loss of funding to our region. That would be my report, and I, you know, if, if any of our other commissioners have questions about that or reservations, it would be wonderful to know that now.
All right, Commissioner Mueller, do you have a report for us?
I did, no report.
Okay, Commissioner Rasmussen?
I would just briefly comment in response to what Commissioner Kuskadon just presented, makes absolutely, in my opinion, total sense to do the three things that you outlined. I feel like every single meeting, we hear about a case like this, that we are being asked in some way or another to continue to provide services, or mandates are increased without an increase in funding, so I think this is a great...
You're learning the chorus, it's the song, saying that it is our experience.
Just unbelievable, but yes, I would fully support that. Beyond that, I do not have any additional report from the committee this week.
Thank you. I appreciate all the reports, but I'd just like to emphasize one of the things, and that's the aging population. It, I think is really difficult for people to understand the impact of demographics. So, those of us who really upset the demographic picture in the United States because we were part of the baby boomers, understood that when we went to school in first grade and second grade, they didn't have enough books, they didn't have enough chairs, they didn't have enough rooms, and there was a great deal of building that went on just to serve the huge numbers of kids that came out of that baby boom population, and then as you tracked that baby boom population, we found out that they also changed how the United States marketed their products and made their income, and they started to market simply to the baby boomers, and then it was to the teenage of baby boomers, and then it was to the young adults of baby boomers, and there was a building boom that went on as they reached into early adulthood. Well, now, we have one-third of the population across the United States, including Minnesota, that are 65 years of age and older. There are more people 65 years of age and older than there are students of school age. That is an absolute tremendous change. Now, think of the impact that that's going to have, and have we really paid attention to that group of people? Because later in life is when the medical needs start to increase. So, just looking at the medical part of that, it's going to have a tremendous impact on this country. And of course, we're responsible for keeping track of the health and welfare of people in the county, which means is that's going to have a great impact on the county. So, the lead baby boomers will reach 80 years of age in 2027, and that population is growing, that's the fastest, the 80-year-old's the fastest-growing age population, and they tend to live longer than the generation before, so they're going to be with us for quite a while. So, that one-third of the population is going to continue to grow. So, the southeastern Minnesota AAA is really important to us, but also for the county, as well as other agencies to start looking at the impact of demographics that the elderly population is going to bring all across the United States. So, thank you very much, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
All the table say aye?
Aye.
Very good, we are adjourned.